I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, January 2nd, 2024. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Tralka?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, the agenda is received. Item two is the organizational meeting. Item A is a resolution to elect the Chair of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the 2024 year.
I make a motion to approve Dan Tralka as Chair.
Is there a second?
I guess I'm, do we have, do we have discussion at this point?
Well, we probably need a second for the, to have discussion and then, or.
I just have a question.
Typically, we typically have a second.
Have a second to at least have discussion. So. Rethinking that second for discussion.
Okay Frankie, I'm not interested, I've just got too much going on. So, and a lot is required of the Chair.
Thank you.
Just because this is my first time doing this.
Second.
Second, but first time I was.
We're reminded this, you've been here a year.
So, isn't it, I mean, is it, is it rather typical that the Vice Chair serves as Chair the following? I know, there's been discussion, there's been rotations and that sort of thing, and I know those have fallen out of, hasn't always been adhered to, we'll say. But isn't it typical that the Vice Chair serves as, as Chair the following year?
Yes.
The Pro Tem has always, yeah, except for a couple of exceptions, maybe, yes.
All right, well then, in, in that interest, I'll make the motion for Chris Schwartz to serve as Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yep, no, I would definitely appreciate the opportunity, so.
Great, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Hi, thank you. First start by thanking Supervisor Layland for an excellent year as Chair. We will next move on to item B, this is a resolution to elect the Chair Pro Tem of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the year 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve the name Dan Tralka as Vice Chair Pro, she's Chair Pro Tem.
Okay, great.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
I haven't switched names.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Next is item C, this is a motion that the standing committees for a 2024 be established.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion that the appointments to the respective boards and committees as representatives of the Board of Supervisors be approved for the 2024 year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
You know, on some of these boards and obligations, I just wish, some of them don't have the Zoom opportunity, you know, and they're regional meetings. So I, you know, I, as important as some of these committees are, it's just tough to drive all the way to Independence when you have a busy schedule. So, I would just encourage these committees to still provide that option.
I think most of like the, like the water sheds and stuff I serve, and we all still provide a Zoom option because we had recognized just the convenience of it, of not having to go to Charles City or Cedar Rapids and vice versa and such.
Yeah, I know that's been an issue for some of the committees I've been on as well, and they typically want to encourage everybody back in person, but I've found that some were very receptive to when it needs to make form. They're a little more willing or able to do that, so that would be something that would be nice to encourage, so.
Just my point.
Yep, a good one.
All right, if there's no further discussion, entertain, all right, we have a motion, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? The motion carries. Next is a motion to au- to authorize the county auditor to issue cigarette permits on behalf of Blackhawk County for the 2024 calendar year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, the motion carries. Next is a resolution that the county auditor be authorized to issue checks payable during 2024 for the following: Water, lights, insurance, telephone, salaries, payrolls as fixed by the Board of Supervisors, postage, court reporters, jury and witness fees, express, express, employee criminal history record checks, bank and bond payments and fees, and emergency expenses from the community services, Veterans Affairs, and Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Hall? Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Item G, this is a resolution that the following newspapers be designated as the two official newspapers of Blackhawk County for the 2024 year, The Courier and The Hudson Herald.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
Is Hudson still in operation?
Yes. Yes. We get the newspaper here, it comes to the office.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Next is a motion to direct Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer, to close county roads as necessary during the 2024 construction season, subject to prior notification to the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? This is a motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Next is a motion to direct Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer, to embargo county roads as necessary for the 2024 year, subject to prior notification to the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Next is a motion to direct the, the Chair to sign the progress vouchers for the farm-to-market payments for the 2024 year.
So moved.
Second.
Tralka?
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Next is a resolution to adopt the 2024 Construction Evaluation Resolution for the purpose of submitting recommendations to the DNR for approval for, or disapproval of construction permit applications pursuant to Iowa Code 459.304 regarding proposed confinement feed operations, otherwise known as CFO constructions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
That concludes the organizational portion of the meeting, we'll now move on to section three, this is public comments. Is there anybody in the room from the public who wishes to speak on something that is not an agenda item? All right, seeing none, is there anybody online? All right, we will move on to claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Veder?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $125,403.84, and we are paying $3,003.15 from the 6040 Fund. Everything appears to be in order, any questions today?
All right, hearing no questions or discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Tralka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution carries.
Next we'll move on to item five, this is receive project updates from department heads and their elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer. The snowplow crews were out Sunday morning, and so today they are busy greasing and cleaning up the trucks, the plows after that call out on Sunday morning. And then our, our crews will be also cutting brush for probably a good part of this week, just due to the low snowfall. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to give an update today, either in the room or online? All right, moving on to the minutes approved from the December 27th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed? I'm sorry, motion carries, or minute. All right, we have two hearings that are going to come up. One is a 9:05 a.m. hearing for ordinance number 77-283, rezone request by Robert P. Denny. And number two is 907 ordinance number 77-283, also a rezone request from Robert P. Denny. Next we will have, those come up a little later in the meeting. Next we will have the consent agenda, this will be approved with a single resolution unless there's items people wish to pull out and discuss.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Next then, this is other business, this is item A, this is resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Kramer &amp; Associates Incorporated of Grimes, Iowa. The letting was held on December 19th, 2023 for Project BHS-COO7-170-63-07, reconstruction and bridge deck replacement on Cedar Wopsi Road, C-57 over Crane Creek with a total bid of $1,051,193.57. The engineer's estimate of $766,764.45 be awarded and direct the Chair to sign the resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Kathy?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments, the DOT did open bids on our behalf on December 19th. We did receive five bids, they were all very close together, well, the top four were very close together. So we feel that these are representative of, of the prices that we're going to have to pay for this bridge rehabilitation work. Unfortunately, we were low in our engineer's estimate, we, I would like to go ahead with this bridge rehab, the deck is, will continue to deteriorate just due to us placing salt on it, traffic loading, that type of thing. It's not, obviously not going to get any better, we will probably have to delay. We will relook at our bridge work in the next, for the next five-year plan, and you'll hear more about that in March, but unfortunately, we're going to have to be paying higher prices for this type of work in the future, and we will readjust our engineer's estimates as we gather more information. So I would like to recommend that you take the bid and I be allowed to authorize or sign the contract.
All right, any discussion or questions? All right, thank you Kathy, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Next to item B, this is a resolution that the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for Project BRS-SAP-COO7FF-07, this is bridge replacement on Pointer Road, be approved and direct the Chair to sign the same and authorize and direct the Iowa Department of Transportation to make final payment in the amount of $24,394 with a total project cost of $813,133.25 as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer. Project was contracted at $89,573.80 with a total working day specified as 100, working days used 100.5, liquidated damage assessments, zero.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Go ahead, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you, as his customer, I do like to show you some slides of the before and after of the construction, and the staff did a really nice job with all the record keeping on this project, got some really nice photos, so I thought I'd take five minutes to show you some of the, some of the construction that worked that went on to replace the structure. This is a picture in the lower right-hand corner of the existing bridge, or the old bridge, and in first glance, it doesn't look like there's anything wrong with it, but it has had deteriorations of the deck. The deck has been replaced about 12 or 13 years ago. Again, it's just another example of our poor, our continuing to need to use salt and maintain the structure in the winter. It was in, it's in a shaded area, so that also contributes probably to some of the deterioration over the years. So the deck was in poor condition, it had been replaced once, you can see it continued to deteriorate after a new deck was placed on it. This was pictures of the concrete piling just a few years ago, so there was a need to replace the structure. As was just mentioned, the contract was awarded to Taylor Construction about a year ago for the $890,000. We decided to replace it with a new structure, 140-foot long, 30-foot wide slab bridge with a 100-day contract. The contractor did use 100.5 days to complete the work, we did not assess liquidated damage just, just on that half a day being over. We felt that we didn't incur, all the costs we incurred were administrative costs, the public wasn't really being delayed by just that half day of not having the bridge open, so we did not opt to charge any liquidated damages. So the first order of work is, of course, to establish the soil, erosion control fencing here, and this is so that we can meet our stormwater permit, our SWIP permit, which is required by DNR. So that's the first order of work, the contractor comes in and sets up that erosion control fencing. Then they begin removing the old structure. That took a few days, and once that, most of that construction debris was out of, was removed, they could begin work on driving piles for the abutments and the piers. So this photo shows the driving of the piles at the east abutment here. Moving on, this again, this shows the west pier, so this is a two beer, a two-pier bridge, a three-span continuous slab bridge. So the pile have been driven, and then these forms are placed around the pile, and then concrete is poured to encase, protect that steel pile for many years. And then you can see over here in the other photo, the formwork has been removed. Continuing on several weeks later, you can see the, the abutment over here is ready for concrete at some point, and this pier, the encasements have been done. And now you can see that with a slab bridge, the contractor has to place, essentially with a slab bridge, you're building two bridges, you're building the permanent structure, and you're also having to place formwork or false work that holds up the concrete as it's curing, so. So some piers, some wooden piles have to be driven here to support that false work or the formwork of the, the concrete. So you can see that in both photos here. Moving on, these are the abutments, both the east and the west abutments, waiting for the concrete to be placed. This is in front of the pier, you can see that we are, the contractor is placing riprap here so that, that we are protecting this, the channel, the channel for many years, so that we don't have erosion in front of our abutment that would shower that away. Again, like I mentioned, there's quite a bit of formwork that holds up the concrete, this would be the underside of the deck, this has to be held up and supported while it is curing. So here you can see the, the area where the steel will be placed for the new deck. So here you can see both, both the initial layer of the green steel, the epoxy coated green steel. We use that now to give us more corrosion protection over the years, over the 70 years, 75-year life of the bridge. And then this is the top layer of the steel. Concrete is being placed on the deck now, and then you can see that our bridges are tined, transversely tined, and then the curing compound is placed. And then a wet burlap cure is on the bridge for three to five days per the DOT specifications. That allows more, the deck to become more impermeable as it's curing, we don't want water and salt water, of course, getting through the deck in the future, and this type of cure does allow a more impermeable concrete. You can see the green steel for the concrete barrier rail about to be poured. And then finally, the bridge itself is finished, and then the approaches on either side of the bridge have to be, have to be done at this point, so we have a 30-foot-long section that is reinforced, followed by another 30-foot-long section that is non-reinforced, and then followed by some new asphalt hot mix that ties in with the existing roadway, and this is looking to the west here. Finally, they are finishing those approaches, and then they will be allowed to cure. This was the completion, it was completed in August. And you can see the side view and the top view there. And then these were a few photos that were taken last week, you can see that the, the seeding has gotten a pretty good establishment. We are in compliance with our stormwater protection permit, and then next year we will come back and seed, it's about two acres, we will be seeding that whole area in a native prairie mixture next year. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Nice presentation, Kathy, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend that you approve this and we be allowed to pay off the final, accept the final acceptance, and then we be allowed to repay, to pay the retainage to our contractor.
Thank you, Kathy. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, next is item C, this is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Rory Giving, Facilities Director, be approved and direct Chair to sign for the same to purchase one Chevrolet one-ton pickup for $45,154 from Carl Chevrolet of Ankeny, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
I'd just like to, this is Rory Giving, Facilities Director, I'd just like to mention, we did have $45,000 budgeted for this vehicle.
All right, very good. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Next is item D, this is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise republic hearing slash bid opening to be held at 9:05 a.m. on January 30th, 2024 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the multi-department, for the multi-department remodel project to accommodate remodeling, elections, treasurer's office, and resulting the offices of the auditor, successor, attorney, and basement common areas to also be impacted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
I just want to thank everyone that was involved in this, I was going to say, last week when it was put on the agenda, Mr. Little brought it to our attention that would the public understand the, the verbiage that was used and what we were doing just by calling it a multi-department remodel, and several of the staff, I think Mike and Michelle and Rory and Carol, different ones were all involved and wanted to make sure it was very clear to the public on the agenda as an agenda item, and also in our minutes to reflect that this remodel was for the elections and treasurer's office, but just impacted others, and that we weren't just doing it as one large project and doing a lot of remodeling with our ARPA dollars, so.
And with the ultimate goal of creating a smoother in-person voting process here in the courthouse for folks.
And people not standing outside in line for paying taxes and things too, so.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. Next we'll move on to item E, this is a motion that the ground use request from Classical Conversations Cedar Valley to use the Blackhawk County Courthouse on Saturday, May 4th, 2024 for mock trial with liability waiver forms to be signed by all participants and guests, be approved and direct the Chair to sign for the same, sign the permission letter for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, the motion carries. All right, it is 9:27. This is a motion, or this is a hearing on the proposed ordinance, number 77-283, Denny Rezone. And aye is a motion to receive and place and file proof application, no as a public hearing.
So moved, I think, Mike, you talked about some changes in here, but how much of this do we need to?
So, what, what we've discussed ahead of time due to the unavailability of certain people is the possibility that this, this hearing may need to be recessed and picked up again on another date, but that doesn't change anything on the agenda, on the agenda, except that under, under item three, we wouldn't close the hearing.
Okay, we just leave that open?
We'd recess it.
And recess it for another?
And then we wouldn't, then we wouldn't get to item four because of that.
What are the, the publishing requirements for, like announcing when the, the recess of this hearing is over?
That's something that I, I found out about this possibility about a half hour before the meeting started this morning. My, my understanding, my advice is that they're, they don't have to republish at this point as long as they're continuing with the, the existing hearing and that we are, we have it on the agenda with at least 24 hours prior notice. Everybody who was interested could have showed at today's hearing, anybody would have reviewed that published notice, and therefore they're going to hear in the event that we decide that that meeting should be recessed and picked up on another date.
Wouldn't we have some obligation, I guess, to notify those individuals in writing as well? As we did for this hearing, just that, as a, I guess courtesy or as a?
I think it's a good idea to notify them as a courtesy, probably been in touch via email or something, I would imagine, because there's been a process that led to today, but, but I don't think that's required as long as we, as long as we publish the notice for the meeting as we usually would, and as long as it's clear to anyone here today when we anticipate that's going to be.
Oh, well, if we can anticipate the date it's going to be, but that's what I thought, if we don't know that yet.
Yeah, if you don't know that yet, then I, then I think we should let them know via another means if they're here today and, and interested in attending that.
Okay, yeah, basically you could do a continuance for the 16th, keep everything open, and then just have the meeting on the 16th, or we can just republish everything, and then just have the meeting on the 23rd. And then both of those dates will, will work for the client that was unable, unable to attend.
And of course, another option is you can go ahead and just have the hearing today with those who are in attendance, make the decision today, the, the problem there is, I, I think these, these individuals who cannot attend today would have a legitimate concern that, hey, look, we gave you a notice, you didn't want us to show up sick, those kind of things. And so I, I think that would be problematic as well, so my recommendation would be to either, well, either of the options that Seth just articulated.
And there was a, one of the gentlemen had mentioned that he had not received the.
Yeah, there was, there was a property that's on, that's not showing up on Beacon, it's his property, and he's within the notice area. And, I don't know, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I- And I don't know, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I guess I should have, you know, from the minutes, but, but he is here. So, you know, so he did receive notice from someone.
Yeah. He heard, he heard about it. I think he said from a neighbor, but I just meant, maybe we could make that correction, too.
You can't show up at a meeting and claim that you didn't know about it. So, I mean.
No, that he didn't receive notice. He didn't say that he didn't know about it.
Yeah. Exactly.
If I misspoke, if that's what they said, but.
Even though he didn't, you know, he was made aware of the meeting, even though he didn't receive.
Are, are we talking about today's meeting?
Yes.
Or, okay, I just want to make sure because I wasn't aware of any irregularities with regard to notice for today's meeting, and I also wasn't aware of any with regard to the prior proceeding.
All right. Well, let's go through it, and then we'll get to item three and then figure out what we're, what we're going to do today. So.
I'll second. I'll second Supervisor Layland's motion.
All right. This was the motion received and placed, approved for publication. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. Next is the motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on December 26, 2023. In Waterloo Courier, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa, publication was approved on the request submitted by Robert P. Denny to rezone 18.93 acres from A Agriculture to CM Commercial Manufacturing District in order to sell the land to a future business.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries. Next, this is item three. This is a motion to close the, the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file. Okay.
So at this point, we can, we can go ahead and have our hearing to the extent the board wishes to. I think it's a good idea to at least, you know, let those in attendance speak their piece since they made an effort to be here today and we're, and we've opened this hearing.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Go ahead, Seth, and then we'll hear from members of the public that are here today as well.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Seth, don't you typically do the review?
Oh, oh, shoot. I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't bring my stuff.
You want to borrow mine?
Yeah. I, I just thought that we weren't having it today.
Well, we're going to listen. We're, whether, what we decide to do going forward is going to.
Three, four of them?
Just one of them, the first one.
At least the first one?
All right.
Because we have people here to speak.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on November 21, 2023, viewed the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 2.35 acres from A Agricultural District to CM Commercial Manufacturing District in order to sell the land to future businesses, which is adjacent to Waverly Road and the West Waver, Cedar Wopsee Road intersection. The request to rezone 2.35 acres from A to CM District in order to allow for two future businesses at that location is moved by shares and seconded by Randret to approve the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 2.35 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to allow for two future businesses. The request is unanimously approved. The one parcel containing the 2.35 acres for the proposed rezonary has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. Surrounding area consists of commercial businesses, farmland. To the north is zone C Commercial, Commercial Manufacturing District. Land of the south, east, and west is all zoned A Agricultural District. The rezoned area is designated as commercial on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And the surrounding area is designated as commercial to the north, southeast, and west. Land of the south is designated as agricultural district. Portion of the rezoned area is located in a special flood hazard area designated by FEMA. However, there is enough land available outside of the hundred-year floodplain to construct two new businesses. Okay. And the site is a land evaluation score of 43 and least a score of 168 indicating low agricultural value. Applicant wishes to rezone 2.35 acres from A to CM in order to have two future businesses at that location. The parcel is large enough to accommodate two developable lots that will meet the lot size and requirements for the CM Commercial Manufacturing District. Land is not in agricultural production. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the request at the regular meeting on November 21, 2023. Poscribed rezon area is not located within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport Land Use Over Labor Review District. Ryan Brendan with the Blackhawk County Engineering Department indicated he cannot comment on the request because he does not have enough information regarding the type of business that will be at the site. Kelly Medora indicated if the future businesses at the site are manufacturing or produce industrial, commercial grade sewage, the systems will need to be sized and regulated by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. And, and that's the first request. Want me to read the second one, too?
And you said, well, not, no, at this point, I guess we're just doing.
Well.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're just basically, they're same relative area.
And my understanding was he just read the 2.35 acre request, which was actually the second one on the agenda.
Oh, shoot. Okay.
And so I think we should probably also read the other request.
Okay. I'll, I'll read that one now. Okay.
And just not have the, forego the second hearing?
Well, we can, we can have the second hearing, but we can, we can go ahead and have the information presented now.
Okay. All right.
And proceed, just procedurally, now we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Eventually, we're going to have to vote on that, and a no vote would deny the motion to close the hearing.
A no vote would keep it open. A no vote would keep it open.
Correct. Just, yeah.
We can reset.
Just want to keep us procedurally on. Do you bet?
For sure.
All right. Yeah. Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on November 21, 2023, reviewed the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 18.93 acres from A Agricultural District to CM Commercial Manufacturing District in order to sell the land to future businesses is located north of 5640 West Cedar Wopsee Road, which is 1,300 feet northwest of the Highway 218 and West Cedar Wopsee Road intersection. The, the north of 5640 West Cedar Wopsee Road rezoned 18.93 acres from Agricultural District to CM Commercial Manufacturing District to allow for potentially three new businesses at the location is moved by shares and seconded by Sage to approve the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 18.93 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to allow for the three future businesses. The request was unanimously approved. The one parcel containing the 18.93 acres for the proposed rezonary has been zoned A Agricultural District and CM Commercial Manufacturing District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance on November 18, 1982. The surrounding area consists of commercial businesses, farmland, and West Cedar Wopsee Road and Highway 218 intersection. Land of the north and east is zoned agricultural district. Land of the south and west is zoned CM Commercial Manufacturing District. The rezoned area is designated as commercial on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Surrounding area is designated as agricultural to north and east. Land to the west and south is designated as commercial. Portion of the, the area is located in a special flood hazard area is designated by FEMA. However, there is enough land available outside of the hundred-year floodplain to allow for up to three new businesses to operate. The, the size of land evaluation scored 50 and least a score of 160, indicating low agricultural value. The applicant was just to rezone 18.93 acres from A to CM in order to allow for three future businesses at the location. The parcels are large enough to accommodate three developable lots that will meet the lot and size requirements for the CM Commercial Manufacturing District by being greater than 172 acres in size and wider than 50 feet. The land is not in agricultural production. Proposed rezonary is located within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport Land Use Review Area. Therefore, all conditions are met. Ryan Brendan with the Blackhawk County Department indicated he cannot comment on the request, is not having information regarding the type of business that will be there. Kelly Medora indicated that future businesses at the site are manufacturing or produce industrial, commercial grade will need to be sized and regulated by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have folks here from, who wish to speak. Just come up to the podium and say your name and address, please.
So which one, which one are we going to talk about first?
The, I guess the 18.93 acres.
I'm William Hess, and I live at 7911 Waverly Road, which is across from the smaller parcel we're going to talk about today, but I'm also prepared to talk about the 18 acres rezoning as well. I have a, I have a petition that's been signed by 30 people. Would you be interested in looking at that? The petition has both properties listed, and all these people are neighbors, family members, and friends that we all have that are opposed to this, this rezoning.
Can you leave that with us, too, to make copies of it later? It's something we can leave? Okay. Great. Thank you. Grant?
Also, also, I have some photographs I'd like to share with you of two separate flooding events. One, of course, 2008, and the other flooding event of 2016. And how it shows the properties, I've labeled the addresses on the, on the photographs. I'd like to share those with you as well.
Mr. Hess, do you live on Cedar Wopsee or Waverly? I'm just looking at the map and trying to.
I'm on, I'm on Waverly Road.
Gotcha.
Sorry. I live on the corner there. Okay? I'm kind of separate.
Sure.
These photographs show the degree of flooding that these areas have experienced in the past. And what's at stake with this discussion is there are several homes that would be impacted by any development of this 18 acres. Well, it would block the flooding, the floodwaters, and could potentially back it up on homes at 8310 Waverly Road, 8226 Waverly Road, 8104 Waverly Road, 8214 Waverly Road, and 8326 Waverly Road. These properties, but the 18 acres on the backside, and any, any development there, regrading or structures would, would change the flow of floodwater and cause them big problems. So one, one of those addresses, two of those addresses are Rogers Market, and they rely on, they grow agricultural produce and have regular farmland and things, and, and it would affect them adversely. So there's also, after the flooding occurs, the water doesn't just flow away. It tends to stay there for a long time, becomes part of the groundwater. At that point, septic systems are, don't, don't work very well. The water bubbles up and, and contaminates the groundwater that some people have shallow wells, and also it has surface, surface water pollution. So that's about what I have to say on it. My, my neighbors from Rogers Market are here. I think, I think Matt Rogers has something to say as well. I would also like to readdress when we talk about the, the two and a half acres across from my house, if I may.
Okay.
Matthew Rogers, 8326 Waverly Road. I'm the one that didn't get any notifications on either of the meetings. So I've got maps of when they did the water, of the flowing of all the water from the watershed program that shows exactly where the water flows. And if they put the buildings in here, it's just going to stop all the water from flowing through there. There's a culvert that they put through underneath the gravel road, too, that that's, that's got to stay there because they took the culvert out of C-57, so then the road is actually lower. I forgot my pictures for that. But I've got these, and then I show how many actual houses are a quarter of a mile from this project. There's, from the south, there's seven houses and only one business, and there's eight houses and three businesses to the north. They were saying how there's no houses in the area. It's all businesses. And that's not true at all, either. So other than what Bill said, that's about all I have. You guys want to see the?
Now, did you attend? You attended, all of you attended the P&amp;Z meeting? Okay.
Hi. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak during the hearing today? Yes, please.
My name's Deb Christopher. I'm actually his mother, and I've been part of the Rogers family for, I'm the third generation. He's fourth. And trust me, growing up, I know that land, how it floods. And my house has been flooded every time there's been groundwater or the major floods. And I'm at the age now, I can't go through another flood. It, I mean, it goes, the last time it went all the way up to just inches of going into my main floor, my house was completely surrounded with floodwater. And like Bill said, it doesn't go away. It stays there. It takes a long time. I mean, I think the last time we started flooding in, like, June, and it wasn't gone until the, well, past the winter. And that's a long time to try to live in a home without septic, without the use of water. You know? We stayed in it, but we had to have, we had to actually boat out or go by, Matthew used his tractor to get us out so that we could get food. And thank God for FEMA, we went up to the, the college for to shower. I mean, your, our home is everything to us, and I can't go through more flooding. This just isn't fair for a corporation to come in and think that they can just build and they don't worry about us. And my address is 8310 Waverly Road. And like I said, I live on the family farm. So hopefully you'll please consider.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak today?
Chris, I'd like a question for Seth.
Yes.
Seth, we heard today, the board has heard that there's some people that weren't notified. Were all the, the rules that pertain to a rezoning, were they notified everybody that was supposed to be within a distance?
Yeah. Everybody within 500 feet was notified with the exception of one person because their information wasn't showing up on Beacon. So I didn't have their information. And they, they did call me, and I, I guess I forgot to take their, their information from the minutes and send them a notice, but, but he, you know, I mean, he was made aware of the meetings, and he is here. He is participating.
Seth, I'm sorry to interrupt. Was this individual made aware of the prior meeting, and was he a part of that?
Yeah. He was a part of the P&amp;Z meeting.
That was my concern.
Yeah. He's got more land, a lot of property than anybody else, but his, his name shouldn't have been topped this.
Are we aware of any other homes or properties on there where anyone didn't?
No.
I didn't get notified.
You got to be within 500 feet.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you have to be within 500 feet. That's who we noticed. That, that's, that's the county requirement.
Thank you.
I mean, when Beacon doesn't show an address for somebody, I mean, that's not my fault. That's the computer system's fault.
No. I was just thinking, in consideration of what.
Oh, yeah.
Our action was part of it as well.
Sure.
So that was all Seth.
I, I do, I, I am going to say that I think it is best practice that if folks are showing up to a P&amp;Z meeting.
Yeah.
That their address is noted, and they are notified, so it doesn't matter about the computer system.
Oh, sure. Sure.
It is, it is, those folks have expressed.
I, I was, I wasn't at that P&amp;Z meeting.
But the notes were available, correct?
Yes.
And folks do state their address, and those addresses, I'm, I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, at the second meeting, I, I, I should have noted that and, and mailed that one out, but I, I failed.
This, this is a well-known business in that area.
Yeah.
All right, do we have, so, so there were, do we bring the, the public up to speed on that there were, there were folks that wanted to speak today but, but are ill and unable to? Is that?
Well, well, basically, the, the attorney for the applicant was unable to make it today because he has COVID, and that's why we're asking for a continuance of the meeting or to just simply republish everything.
All right.
Send it out.
But they're informed that we had Zoom available as well, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Zoom available at every, every P and Z and Board of Adjustment meeting.
I, I'm not aware of how bad this, badly this impacted him, this is Eric Johnson, right? Now, I, I would say that if, if he is indeed very, very ill, and I, and I unaware of the situation, except that, that he has COVID, I, I would imagine that his advocacy for his clients would be impacted by that as well.
Yep.
I actually think that it worked out well, considering the circumstances, because there's a lot of opposition, so I, I, for one, want more information.
Me, too.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the direction of the board.
Yep.
Majority, but I was gonna say it's, plus the opportunity, you usually do the presentation where the public and everyone gets to see the flood zone and all that kind of information that I know you didn't know you were gonna be doing today, so.
Yeah.
That would help us, I think.
I mean, yeah, because we, we could just go ahead and have them republish notice and then have them come back.
Well, Mike said we don't have to.
We don't have to.
I don't think we need to.
We don't need to.
We can recess the hearing.
Okay, yeah, we don't need to, I mean, we can, we can just have, and then the folks are here.
On what, I think, January?
The sixteenth, yeah, that's what you said, we could recess till the sixteenth.
Yep. I mean, but, does that work for you folks, to come back on the sixteenth?
I don't know, I was supposed to have surgery today, and I postponed that till the sixteenth.
Oh, gosh.
Not funny.
You know, both, both items are the obvious for today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I, I think since notice has been an issue, we need to make sure that notice goes to each of the individuals who we now know is within the.
Oh, sure, sure, I mean, you know, I'll, I mean, usually I do a pretty good job of if I, you know, if I get some addresses and we're not showing up on Beacon, you know, but I guess this particular case, I wasn't at the meeting, so had I been at the meeting, I probably would have been more cognizant, but.
The, the only reason that wasn't a legal concern right now is because Mr. Rogers did get, I mean, he, he did have his opportunity at both meetings. If, if there had, if he had missed the first one, for example, I would have said, well, we need to start over, and so that's the only reason I.
Oh, sure, sure, understand.
Still appears more, more time.
All right, yes.
To our advantage.
So, so Mike, the, the court actually says we do have a motion on the floor to, we either rescind that motion or vote the motion down?
That, either option will work, and then there could be a motion to recess the hearing.
All right, I think it's a little clearer if the folks who made the motion want to rescind the motion.
Or just amend, either way.
Yeah.
As long as we're clear what we're doing.
I agree, let's amend, yeah, amend the motion.
We're finally to amend the motion to recess the hearing until the sixteenth?
Yes.
Who made it?
I think Tavis made the motion, or did?
I don't think so, I think it was you.
Grant remembers.
Motion to close was, second by Layland.
Okay.
But if you're amending it, then you just have a new movement. Whoever wants to amend the motion, who is to amend?
I'm, I'm amend it to recess, is that the?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I'll make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to recess the hearing.
Till January sixteenth.
Till January sixteenth, so we have a definite date.
Second.
And that is what? That would be a, would be a Tuesday.
Yep.
All right, well, the motion on the floor now is to, to recess this hearing until the sixteenth. Everybody clear?
You, excuse me, you should vote, vote on the amendment, and it carries then.
Okay, oh, well, okay, well, we'll first take a, a.
Motion to amend?
We'll vote on the motion to amend, um, the motion, let's move.
And I'll, I'll send out notice again today.
All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now voting on the motion as amended, and this would recess the, the hearing until the sixteenth. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Uh, so now we, we just move on to the next item.
We don't have to do the same actions for the second hearing, do we, Mike?
Well, I believe we do, actually.
Okay.
Because I know that at least one comment was reserved until we got to this next hearing, so I think we need to go through that.
All right, so we'll get to item three, and this time, we'll just entertain a motion to suspend, and we don't have to modify or amend emotions. All right, all right, so while you're moving on now to item G, it is approximately nine fifty-five. This is a hearing on the proposed ordinance number seven-seven-dash-two-eight-four, this is the Denny rezon. Item I is a motion to receive and place and file proof publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. This is item two, this is a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three in Waterloo Courier in accordance with the requirements of Code of Iowa. Publication was approved on the request submitted by Robert P. Danning to rezone two-point-three-five acres from A Agriculture District to C M Commercial Manufacturing District in order to sell the land to future business.
So moved.
Second. So it moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll now move on to the hearing. So do we need to take any action in order to open up the hearing, to allow people to speak?
You don't really need an action.
Okay.
To close, I mean, you have an action to close the hearing on the agenda, but if you, if nobody moves that, then there is no action.
All right.
I guess if you want to take an action to recess to a certain date, then.
All right, we'll, we'll first give folks up, oh, go ahead, Mike.
There we go.
First give folks an opportunity to, to speak, and then we will, I'll entertain a motion to, to recess this hearing. So if you, Mr. Hess, if you want to come with, uh.
William Hess, again, I am just, I'm probably the only one here to oppose, to oppose this rezoning request, but the petition that I handed out earlier has the, has the same people that signed for this request as well. Also, the photographs passed, they, they show this property as well, right, right at the intersection of Waverly Road and, and County C fifty-seven, so I'd like you to identify that property on those photos as well. Basically, I have three points to discuss today, and the first one is currently this is zoned agricultural. So what I'd like to see is that we need to maintain a buffer zone around, around our farm to help prevent complaints and lawsuits from this property. We've had problems with a previous tenant that lived there. Mr. Denny owned the property at the time, but he leased it to a tenant, and the tenant would come over and he complained about, about noise from the farm. He also came over and was very mad when we, when we'd spray the field around his house with, with chemicals, and then he'd get mad when we made dust, and he'd, he'd yell at me and, and utilize obscene gestures when I was trying to perform my, my tasks. So currently, we get along with our neighbors in the neighborhood. They hold large events at the trap shooting grounds there, Cedar Falls Gun Club, and basically, there are two weeks of the year that, that we withhold from agricultural activities because it would interfere with their events. The other place is the Cedar Falls Motorsports Park where they run drag, the drag strip, and they hold events almost every weekend during the summer, and so we refrain from creating dust and, and spraying and, and putting anhydrous ammonia on when they're having events because that, you know, we just want to get along with them. So, so, you know, we try hard, try hard to make it work. So we also, the second item is the intersection there. Waverly Road and C fifty-seven has become a very busy intersection. It's also become a major conduit for agricultural equipment, grain, and feed transport routes. This is largely due to the improvements made by you guys with the, the new Cedar River Bridge and the Highway two-eighteen overpass. It is basically the only place for agricultural commerce across northern Blackhawk County. Can't go, can't go through Cedar Falls, Janesville has a new bridge now, but it's not, it's not really available for, for transport. So traffic congestion is a big problem with, with the tractors and combines and things that go through there. We have also had two, not on my farm, but in front of my house, we've had two tractor-related accidents. You know, people run into tractors that are on the road there, and it's a concern. Over the years, we've had many accidents there, I've lived there for forty-three years, and you can actually hear the tire screeching and the, and the, and the explosion or the impact from the crash, and you just better call nine-one-one right away. So we don't need more traffic or confusion at that intersection, and if the guy builds two businesses right there on the corner, it'll just make matters worse. And my third point is, of course, the flooding and groundwater issues. We are concerned that any additional building or grade improvement, grade, grade increase on that property will bounce floodwaters back right through my front yard, through my farmyard, and through my neighbors to the south, B W Contractors and the Beckmans and Antique Acres. I know that the road has been raised a little bit, and with the new grade for the interchange, we are gonna be the low spot, and I think that if we have another problem like we did in two thousand and eight and two thousand and sixteen, it, we're gonna have a lot of water. So we've had majors, several major flood events over the years. Nineteen ninety-three comes to mind, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and eight, twenty sixteen, and I found out recently that the twenty-sixteen event was only the ninth, the ninth highest crest in Cedar Falls, so that means there were, there were, there were eight events higher than the twenty-sixteen crest. And of course, after major flooding, the water doesn't just recede, it stays here about as groundwater in the water table. The major concern is that sewer and septic systems fail to work, and they leak into the new water source affecting shallow wells and surface water. So in the end, I, I think it probably is wrong for someone to come in and purchase flood-distressed properties and to rezone them, to develop and divide them to sell to someone else, I think is simply wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to speak during this hearing?
I'll make the motion to recess the hearing until January sixteenth.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to recess the hearing. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the motion is recessed. We will, or the hearing is recessed until the sixteenth. We'll now move on to item ten, any reports or information from the board?
I just have two. On January fourth, we're gonna have the property evidence building discussion with the sheriff's office, Cedar Falls Police Department, Waterloo Police Department, and then in regard to consolidated communications, five or six of us are continuing discussions, we're gonna have another meeting soon to discuss how that would look like if we move forward, and eventually, hopefully, in the next month or two, we'll bring a recommendation to the board or a topic for discussion.
Very good. All right.
Uh, just give everybody a heads up, I'm, I'm gonna add the community services topic on the next week's agenda. Over break, I heard a handful of folks just running into, that presented to us, and so I know we've got a tall task, trying to wade through all of those with only so many dollars initially allocated, so, yeah, I'll add it to the agenda and, at least for discussion, possible action, and then sort of see where it goes, so.
Very good. Any other reports or information? All right, hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The meeting's adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.